His allegiance to my Trump. Mayor and counsel, we are at an inflection point. Do you want our police department to be a neo Gestapo? You cannot rectify the injustice perpetrated upon Becker. But you can issue a proclamation that the city of Whitefish welcomes immigrants, and they can be assured that in our beautiful community, operating a vehicle with a broken taillight will result in a citation, not a deportation. Thank you.
Thank you, Zee. Further comments from the public?
Good evening. My name is Shannon. I also do not wish to give my address for safety reasons, although I have been a resident of Whitefish for 24 years. I'm also speaking on the issue of the detainment of the gentleman Becker, who was arrested in a traffic stop due to involvement of the Border Patrol in his traffic stop. Living here, I've often wondered, what is my greatest fear? It used to be being mauled by a bear. Am I going to be hit by a drunk driver? Are my kids going to be shot at school? Today, my greatest fear is meeting law enforcement. Despite being a US-born citizen, I maybe don't look white enough. As a person with brown skin, walking through the streets of Whitefish, I am afraid of meeting law enforcement, and that something will occur, or nothing will occur, since border control can detain people for absolutely no cause. Will I be ripped from my family, detained, denied food and water, denied due process, not know when or if I will come home? Once again, I was born in the United States. I have lived in this town for fully half of my life. Also, I run a Spanish conversation club at the library, and recently, we've had a bunch of Whitefish high school students come and practice conversation with us. It's been really amazing. As the weather's gotten nicer, we've considered, oh, let's meet at a coffee shop, or maybe in the park, or we could just have some kind of casual hangouts. And now, I have to reconsider that. If I'm overheard speaking Spanish in coffee traders, or down at the park, is someone going to call the police? Are the police going to call Border Patrol? Am I not going to end up going home that night? And just a final note, I only have one visitor number to share with the board, and that's my family, who is choosing not to visit Whitefish this summer. They usually come every year. They're choosing not to come for fears of engaging with TSA, and for fears of engaging with local law enforcement as people with brown skin and Latino last names. So, things I hope you will all consider as you meet these issues. This isn't happening to somebody else. This didn't just happen to occur. This is happening to me, every day that I live here. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Further comments from the public?
Good evening. Sorry. So, this is really my least favorite thing to do, but I thought it was very important that I be here today. So, my name is John Ratka Skinner. I've lived in the Flathead Valley for about 13 years. I'm a member of the local greater Latino community, and a community advocate for many of the recent immigrants that have come to our valley. But also of note, I really felt compelled to be here because I am the personal sponsor of Mr. Renjifo Del Castillo, having filed the paperwork with USCIS for Cuba-Haiti-Nicaragua and Venezuela parole program. And really, the point of that is, is at the time of his police stop, he had a valid Montana driver's license, car insurance, a valid work permit, and his status continues to be unexpired and valid, recently reinforced within the last few hours by another district court rejecting Trump attempts to revoke the status of approximately 400,000 legal immigrants under this program. So, over the past few months, we really have seen an increase in local law enforcement agencies calling Border Patrol under the auspices of providing interpretation services. This is a new policy since January 20th, as confirmed by several sources with a variety of police agencies here in the valley. Before that, law enforcement agencies only relied on telephone interpretation services, services that are still very much available to all law enforcement agencies, and services which taxpayers are still very much paying for. There's really no excuse to be calling Border Patrol on brown folks. You know, when Mr. Renjifo, various times throughout the ordeal, there was really no reason for Whitefish police to call Border Patrol, other than the fact that he was brown and didn't speak English. You know, I think, as a Latino member of the community, I'm very much aware that we have a lot of Russian and Canadian folks running around as well. I find it very hard to believe that any law enforcement agency would call Border Patrol on any Russian or Canadian white woman. So, again, I'm really sorry, I'm not going to be the most articulate person here today. I worked all day, and I also took the night off from my grocery store job, which I would also be working to be here. But y'all have an important choice to make. We are seeing, really, the only thing I can describe is an ethnic cleansing here in our valley, and y'all have a decision on whether or not you're going to allow the police department to participate in that. You know, I'm not here to be a hard ass, excuse my language, and I do very much look forward to talking to y'all and representatives of the Whitefish Police Department to continue that dialogue and move forward together as a community. And I apologize, so I'm a resident of Marion.
Thanks very much, John. Additional public comment tonight?
Good evening. My name is Dee DeYoung, and I'm a resident of the Flathead Valley. I live at 99 Riverside Road. And I want, first of all, I want to thank all of you for your service, because what you do for Whitefish community, for all communities, lots of people wouldn't take the time, and serving is really important. I just want to echo what has been said by the other speakers here tonight. And for me, it started with liberty and justice for all. With liberty and justice for all. I think that what we're seeing happen across our country right now, there's a lot of racial profiling that's going on. We may not want to call it that. It's time, I think in Whitefish, as Johnny was just saying, and the speakers before us, it's a time for us to decide where do we stand. There's a wonderful book, and the title of it is "How Then Shall We Live?" What has been just plaguing my mind, as things keep coming at us across the nation, is who are we? It takes me back to when there was an incident here in Whitefish where the Jewish community was targeted, and an organization called Love Lives Here came and held a protest in support of our Jewish community. I believe it's time for us to stand up in support of our migrants who are here in the valley, who are being targeted. And it's time to really take a look at where are we going to stand, and what are we going to do? It is time to take a stand, because silence is complicity, and doing nothing, not having accountability across the board for all levels, for ourselves individually, for our cities, for our police departments, for our Border Patrol, for all of us. How then shall we live? Who are we? So, I encourage, from City Council, I'm not an attorney, I don't know what your authority is in the community here, I would encourage collaboration with the police department, and coming together and pulling your brains and your hearts together and going, how do we want to go forward? It is impacting. I spent part of my winter in Europe this winter, and I apologized to a lot of people there for what was happening in our country, and they said, we know it's not the people. We know that it's this administration and what's going on right now. They weren't trying to politicize anything, but they're appalled. A Hungarian man said to me, who is now a citizen in Chicago, has been a citizen for, he and his wife, as citizens for 13 years, he said, what I am seeing happening in the United States is frightening, because my family went through that with Viktor Orban. Who are we? Where will we stand? A lot of this rests with you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, DeeDee. Further comments from the public this evening?
My name's Marty Brandt. I'm at 575 Armory Road, here for the same reason as all the people who spoke prior to me, and they had wonderful things to say, so I don't really think I can top any of that. I think my only request would be to ask our City Council, in what instances, if we can collaborate with our police, and ask in what instances we are calling Border Patrol, are we really using them for translation services? I think there are much better options out there. I think, I've studied Spanish, I think even in a pinch, you could maybe use a translation app, and that would be a lot more neutral of an option, I really feel, for people in our community who are feeling persecuted right now, and we've all heard that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Further public comment tonight? I know it takes a lot of courage to come out, and I know this is a very passionate subject matter in this town, for that matter, and I just would like to thank you for speaking this evening to the council. Very much appreciated. With that said, I will close the public comment period, and we'll stay with the audience. Any volunteer board reports? How about counsel? Not seeing any. You do have the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the April 7, 2025, regular meeting, and I would entertain a motion, please.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Sweeney. Further discussion? All those in favor, with Rebecca standing, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like son, and that motion is unanimous, which brings us on to our first public hearing of the evening, item 7A, resolution 25-8, revising fees for solid waste disposal services. Craig?
I'm actually taking this one for Greg.
Okay.
But thank you. So, on March 3, the City Council held a work session. We discussed the solid waste contract with Republic Services, which does provide a 3.25% annual increase in their fees charged. We also talked about the solid waste fund and the financial challenges it's having, given the fact that we have not passed on to our customers the 3.25% increase that Republic has passed on to the city for now three years. They just had their third increase, would have gone into effect May 3, I believe, or 2 of this month. So, we have not increased garbage rates since June of '22, and just to clarify, I've seen some comments that say we are increasing rates ahead of when Republic is increasing rates. That's incorrect. We are not recommending a rate increase in advance of the cost being passed on to us. In fact, we are late in passing this increase on, which is why it is so high. And so, with that, we bill about 4,100 residential accounts and 469 commercial accounts. Right now, the total expenses for the solid waste fund for fiscal year '25 is about $1.7 million. Of that, only $195,000 are city-related costs, so think software, staff time for billing, postage, downtown garbage pickup, those type of things, and insurance. As an enterprise fund, this is not property tax-supported, and so revenues should, we should generate enough revenues to cover the expenses in that fund. We have been able to utilize our cash reserves, and that is how the fund has been able to sustain some of these increases, though we're at the point where it will no longer do so. The proposed increase for a residential bear cart, which is your standard residential home, is going to, or is proposed to go from $17.25 to $20.34. That is an 18% increase, or just over $3 a month. There is a breakdown in my staff report on page 92 of the packet, where you show what that $20.34 is for. Of that $20.34, $17.34 is the direct fee that Republic is charging the city for that service, and that's a $1.59 increase. The city's billing administration, which is our cost of mailing the bills, the cost of postage, cost of staff time to manage the accounts, that is increasing from $1.50 to $3. And just for some historical knowledge, back in 2004, that rate was $2. So, we have, over time, eaten into that administrative rate, administration rate, then we bring it back up. It's fluctuated, but, you know, 21 years ago, that was $2. So, if you take that over the past 21 years, you're looking at about a 2.4% increase per year for that administrative fee, which is not overly significant, but if you were to look at it as just this one-time change, it is. So, what we're doing is trying to actually have that administrative fee cover the true costs of what it is for us billing for garbage services. We are proposing some changes with this, specifically for the commercial account. So, currently, there is a $5 administrative fee per business, and that's per business. So, if it's one building with five businesses, it's $5 per business in that building. Because we're looking at this and looking at the equability of that fee, we're proposing to change that to $7 per utility account, because that covers the time in that account, it covers the postage for that account. But if there are two businesses, because businesses tend to change service more frequently than residents, we are having that be a $14 fee per month, but that is, that's the max. So, it wouldn't be, if you have five businesses in a building, it wouldn't be $25. Your max now is actually 14. So, some businesses would see a reduction in their commercial fees, in their, yeah, commercial account fees. Also included in this, we're proposing that we have an automatic increase for May of '26, and then May of '27, to accommodate the contract increase that we know is coming forward with our Republic Services contract, and that Republic Services has the ability to increase at 3.25%. They have never indicated they would increase less than that. While we would hope that they would, we do know that a 3.25% increase is lower than what CPI is for garbage hauling services, if you were to look at the national index. So, with that, I did provide some financial analysis. You'll see that for the administrative fee for fiscal year '26, it really just makes us break even. We would have $403 more than what we would anticipate for the cost of service for billing. What that doesn't do is, it doesn't necessarily make up the loss that we've experienced so far, but we understand that this is a significant increase, and so, over time, we'll be able to address that with a 3.25%. We are going to break out the administrative fee moving forward compared to the Republic Services fee, because we feel that's very important for our customers to be able to see. It's also a mechanism that will help us more easily audit Republic Services invoice to us, because then their rate should match the rate that they're providing us in their bill, and so that's going to help us with the issues we've had with billing with them. So, with that, I do want to just note that we have two other things regarding this. We have up on our Engage Whitefish website, a survey for the public to take regarding mandatory garbage service. Also has some other questions about how is your service being provided, are there changes and whatnot? So, we encourage everyone to go on and take that survey. That survey really is to gauge the public's interest in mandatory garbage service or not. And then, we have been approached by an individual, and you actually heard from him tonight in one of your committee interviews, but Jonathan Proto, he is, has applied to start a new garbage hauling service in Whitefish, and is, will at the next meeting be seeking counsel's interest in providing an affidavit of support for that application. The PSC has not often allowed for two haulers in one community unless there are significant issues, and so with that form, we decided he should bring it to you at your next meeting. So, there could be options, I guess, in the future, but unknown yet. So, with that, staff respectfully recommends, after you hold the public hearing, that you approve the resolution that would revise fees for solid waste disposal services, and that would be effective May 15 of 2025.
Thank you, Dana. We'll start with questions of the council. Giuseppe, and then Steve.
Dana, we are looking at this increase partially because it is part of the initial contract with Republic, which we resolved to sign, we resolved on June 20, 2022. So, what we can only do is comply to the contract. Now, my question is, do we have any instance where you think Republic has not delivered accordingly to the contract?
Yes. I would say that there are challenges we faced with dealing with the billing process of when, what they bill us versus what we're billing our customers. They have made some progress on auditing their records compared to ours, and then I would probably defer to Angie. Counsel did direct Angie to write a letter regarding the deficiencies that we've seen in their contract, and I know that you've worked with Rose on that. So, our billing staff definitely knows more, but there have been communication issues, and following the billing process of invoicing us and what we're paying has not followed the contract.
Okay. So, just to simplify, there are two parties. We sign an agreement which bound us for the future years. We're bound to keep raising the fees, mirroring, they're raising the fees to us. They're bound to provide a service to let them be audited, to respond to our inquiries as needed. They have not respected their side of the deal, and I'm asked to vote to respect our side of the deal, which, by the way, for the record, I didn't vote for it when we started. So, is that a simple representation of what we're talking about here?
I believe that that's generally correct. I mean, I think it's important that the city, you know, by state law, we're bound to follow our contracts, and if there is an issue with it, we'll go through the legal process, but there is a period of cure that they would have to be able to correct those deficiencies once notified. So, as of right now, that contract is still valid, and we would need to pass on those fees. And the issue that we face right now is that these are past fees that they've increased, and so we're having to increase more than the 3.25% in one year.
Steve?
Is there any other remedy besides raising fees all the time on this? Because I know $3 doesn't sound like much to the average person, $3 a month, but when you add in the continued bonds and levies from the school district that raise our taxes, the reappraisals that keep going up, I mean, eventually, we're going to wipe out all the people that, that are, for better or worse, on a fixed income, and we're just, and it seems like there's got to be a third option to this consistent and constant raising of fees. I mean, it was, we went from $8 to 15 three years ago, or two years ago, and now we're going up another 18%, which is, it just, I just don't understand how we can't get a grasp on this trash thing and make it actually meaningful and not consistently going up every single year.
I think you guys could think about getting rid of mandated garbage service.
And that's, to me, the only remedy here. I mean, we have a contract that counsel approved, and I executed on that approval, that provides 3.25% every year. You know, we can look at the admin fee, but these are employees that work on billing for garbage, water, and sewer, so if we don't pay for them through garbage, we're shifting all of their wages to water and sewer, which then would impact those funds. So, it's not, it's not as simple as don't have an admin fee, or don't increase the admin fee. It means it's going to be increased somewhere else, because we have to have the staff. It just means who's paying for it. So, this makes it correct in that garbage would be paying for the actual time spent on it. The only way I see getting out of this contract is to no longer require garbage, mandatory garbage service, which I will say, quite a few communities do not require garbage service and have not had an issue with the code enforcement of, you know, yards filling up with trash. Columbia Falls is one of them, that it's optional, and they only have one hauler, which is Evergreen, to provide service. West Yellowstone's another one. They don't require garbage service, but they do mandate bear-resistant containers, so we would still have that. So, that, that's why we issued that public survey, so we could bring that back to counsel, and then you could make that determination, if you'd like to proceed with eliminating mandatory garbage, based on the survey results. I will say, I feel like we've been getting a lot more emails lately saying, why is garbage mandatory, than we have in the past.
And what is the process for getting out of it? I mean, do we have to continue the contract, or?
You know, I think the process is, you folks get rid of mandated garbage, and then we don't necessarily have to have a contract. I think the primary problem is, is that the PSC has really tied our hands. We have one hauler, and that is Republic.
So, there's no competition?
There is no competition, absolutely. And so, the mandated garbage, I think, has been in effect since like 1918, and, I mean, it's old, and I think that is, if you, if you really want to see a change in that, we require people to haul their own garbage. And I think that the thinking behind requiring garbage, you know, 100 years ago, was much different. I mean, people will haul their own garbage. Now, they're not going to put it in their yard. So, I think that is...
But they could still contract with Republic to pick up their trash if they wanted.
Yep. They can still, yep, people can contract with...
And that would, that would cut the city out of the whole thing?
It would cut, it would cut us out of the entire thing. It would take our staff out of it, which I know has been really trying for lany stuff. So, I mean, it's something to think about, and it's going to continue to be a pain in the butt, truthfully, because Republic is not responsive, and we can bow out of the contract, but I honestly think you guys need to think about not mandating trash anymore.
Okay. Thank you. Rebecca, and then Ben.
Yep. I called Dana earlier today, because people were kind of complaining to me about the rise in, in the fees, and so she did have some good news. One was that we might have an alternative hauler applying with, but do you have any idea how long that process is for him to get approved, if he actually goes?
I do not. My, the only thing I know from him is that he's trying to get all of the letters of support by the end of the month submitted.
Okay. And then, the other thing is, I think Columbia Falls has a green box place where you can go, and it's bear-proofed, and so people have something in their own town to take their garbage to. We don't have anything like that, and so if we do go that route, we might want to have a site like that here, which might be a bear attractant, but...
Well, and I think the county, Craig, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think, I think we've tried to ask that question, and because the landfill is so close, they aren't interested in paying for one. And then, if we're paying for one, you have a fee, and so if you're trying to get rid of mandatory garbage and the fees that's associated with it, you're going to have a fee to have to manage a site. There's a manned in Columbia Falls to keep it clean, and fenced, and, you know, it's, but they still have issues with trash, I can tell you that along the edges, but it's definitely a manned drop site. But I think I spoke correctly. Craig, am I correct in that?
Yeah. The other green box, so I think there's about a dozen green box sites throughout the county. the county. And there are a couple where there's specifically a surcharge billed, Big Fork, Creston, and there may be one other where that community specifically requested their own green box facility, and the county essentially funds it through a special surcharge on those residents' annual tax bill. So, I mean, that's an option. We've never really formally discussed it with the county, but that could be something, if we're directed, we could do.
And Dana, did you want to mention what you said about the water and sewer rates possibly being flatlined or going down to help with people's monthly bills?
Yeah, I mean, I know, they won't be going down by any means, but we're going to do our best to keep them, you know, at reasonable increases. We are working with a consultant. We procured a really neat software where you can real-time change the data to help you plan for rates, very simple, similar to a rate study, but it's like real-time and has graphics, and you can change projects as things, you know, update. Instead of having to go through a very expensive update with a consultant, we're able to do that right there with help from that company. Early indications are that the increases are going to be very minor, you know, like 2% to 3% at most, maybe even less than that. And it could be something where we hold off for another year and just given the budget and not do one. And then the next year would be a little bit more reasonable. But we do have some big projects coming up with the water tower on the south end of town. That is a very expensive project. I think it's up to 13, 18? I can't remember, 18 million now? And so the pricing, prices of those projects for extra capacity continue to increase. So with that, though, I would say that, you know, there's no huge increases coming for water and sewer like you're seeing with this garbage increase.
Thank you.
Ben?
If I could just extend the discussion for a second on the mandatory service. So you feel that we can exit the contract with Republic Services if that's the direction we decided to go to?
We can try.
Okay. And if, if, if we were interested in going in that direction, what do you feel the appropriate next steps would be?
I think, I mean, to begin with, reaching out to Republic, but also, we would just need to change our code and not require mandatory garbage anymore. And then find a way, I guess, to talk to Republic about executing the contract. Truthfully, it doesn't seem like they're very interested in response, any response to us. So I think first step would be folks getting rid of mandatory garbage, and then we'd go forward from there.
You think changing the ordinance would be step one, not the contract?
I think it would be step one, yes.
Does that open us up to contractual liability problems or anything like that? Maybe?
Can I not say that in a public meeting?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, and then my next question, my understanding of this is essentially that this is a pre-planned, more or less, inflation adjustment that is in our contract. Does it make sense to have these readjust every year or something like that, so it's not coming through all at once and a large rate increase going forward?
Yes. So that is why we have May of '26 and '27 in here. I didn't go beyond that because of the discussion on mandatory garbage. I didn't think that it was necessary. But our intent would be that it's 3.25% every year, not this significant increase. That was due to lack of staff time to prepare for this.
Thank you.
Further questions for staff? Please.
Ben, thank you for that question. Angie, just painting the scenario, say this town does not touch the contract, but lifts, lifts the fact that the garbage is mandatory, and say that half of the citizens decide they do not need garbage. And I don't remember this. Accordingly, to our current contract, would we be starting paying Republic half if half say no? I'm making the case simple. Or if everybody says, I don't want garbage anymore, hence the service is not executing a service, what's our contract request to the city? Do they bill us on 7,000 inhabitants or on the users?
The contract assumes mandatory garbage. So it assumes that if the property is in Whitefish, it is serviced as a residential property.
And even if you don't use it, you pay for it.
Correct. There's that. I mean, people can haul their own garbage, but they're still going to pay the mandatory fee.
So if we change the, if the town had a different law, because seven new council members decided to change that code, the city is still bound to pay Republic for a service that nobody uses? Is that how it is written?
I believe that's how it, how it is written, and I do not believe that there's an exception to a change in law, because they wanted, they wanted a 10-year contract to procure all of the animal-resistant containers. You know, that was a significant investment for them, and it was spread out over 10 years to lower that cost for residents, because had they put, like, front-loaded that for three years, it would have been much higher. So that's why we had a 10-year contract for it. Excuse me. But it does contemplate the mandatory aspect of garbage.
Real briefly, then, I want to go to a public hearing.
Yeah, I just, is there any way to spread out this 18%? We know we have a 10-year contract that we may or may not continue with. Is there any way to spread out this rate increase over that 10-year period, knowing that it's going to go up 3.25% every year on top of that, rather than doing it all at once to make it all whole? That, I guess that's my other, isn't there another option instead of doing it all at once?
So I can just tell you this much, if we don't do this increase, or you do a limited increase, you will be taking a loan from the general fund for property taxes. So, I mean, that's your alternative, but you have to pay that back eventually by those rates. If you don't have garbage anymore, obviously, you can't pay that back. The taxpayers just cover the costs of garbage, and sure, they're the same, but the same, you know, individuals, but the, the way that that's levied is different than the actual service. So that's not good, generally accepted accounting principles, is what I would say.
This is exactly what happened. And Andy, I think you were up there with me back in 2006, 2007. We hadn't raised water enterprise fees for rates for a number of years, yet we were faced with having to build a water treatment plan. And the argument was, providing water isn't optional for a municipality. And you either snowplow this problem into the future, you bite the bullet and increase the fees over a three-year period, which is what we ended up doing, to become solvent again in that fund. And that's the reality. I think it comes down to whether or not we want to mandate garbage. And if we do, then I think that staff has laid out a very compelling argument to do so. If we don't want to mandate garbage, that's a whole different discussion. With that said, I would like to go to a public hearing on what will be Resolution 25-8. Any public comment here tonight in the audience? And I assume we still can't take public comment remotely from Lord Vader?
For those of you who are on Zoom, can you hear us? And are you interested in speaking towards this? I think we're good.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public comment period and turn it back to the council for a motion, preferably Frank.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion.
Andy.
I would motion to approve Resolution Number 25-08, and that's a resolution revising fees for solid waste disposal services.
Is there a second to the motion?
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Norton. Further discussion?
I'd speak to it really quickly.
Please.
I appreciate all the other discussion up here, but that's not what we have before us tonight. I think that's a discussion for the future. Our contract obligation to Republic today is to pay that. And unlike they think they could do in Washington, we can't simply wave a magic wand and have a change tomorrow. So we need to continue to provide that service, and we need to be able to pay for that service. And we can't shift that burden off to some other fund in the budget. We know that. Enterprise funds are enterprise funds. They bring in the amount of money it takes to fund something, and they don't build a cash reserve even, particularly for something like this, like we do in sewer and water, where we do have ongoing reserves that we build up over time. So this is strictly what it costs us to do this. We're kind of leaving out of this. Everybody's like, oh, it went up a lot. Well, a big chunk of that was bear-resistant containers, if we recall, $6 a month, right? Isn't that what it was roughly? So we, in 2022, when we went to the bear-resistant containers, that was an additional $6 a month, which is something we had to do. That was not an option for us, I'm sorry. And we didn't raise rates for two years after that to partly absorb that cost as best as we could. Now, I appreciate the argument for not requiring garbage, and I think that's something we do need to consider, and we brought that up at our last work session. I believe I was the person that mentioned it. But we have to understand that people do have to do something with their garbage. And as Rebecca pointed out earlier, we don't have a green box site here. So if you take this federally allowable deduction for mileage on a car, which is 67 cents for today, it costs you, to the dump, $6.70. If you're going over to Columbia Falls, it's $10.72. It costs you to take your car over there and back, if you depreciate it and put tires on it and all the rest of that stuff. Well, if you're a family of four and you're generating a lot of trash, you're doing that once a week. That's a lot more than we charge for garbage right now. And what we saw in the past, when we had big green boxes out, everybody that lived on the periphery of the community, and we caught a number of people, and I, some of them were high-profile famous people that lived here, that would bring their garbage into town and dump it. Well, suddenly, what would happen if you only have a few people out there with cans? My concern with that program is that people are scouring up and down the alleys rather than driving over to Columbia Falls, and they're throwing their bag in your can. Because it happens. It happened before, and it would probably happen in the future, and it's one of the reasons we've had mandated service in this community. So that's kind of a long-winded, speak to my motion, but I think that, yes, we do need to explore not having mandatory service in this community, but that's not the discussion we're having tonight.
Thank you, Andy. Giuseppe?
Yes, I wanted to say, I fully agree with Andy. The only choice tonight is to vote for the resolution. For that reason, I was against to how the contract was written, and I voted against it in June 2022. So I'll take the liberty to vote against it, just to be consistent with my record, and it won't make any difference. Thank you.
Further comments? Real briefly?
Just, I'll be quick. I do, I agree with you, Andy. It's not the question, it's not the question we're asked tonight, and I will begrudgingly hold my nose and vote for this, because I do understand, at least on some minimum level, the finances and the difference between an enterprise fund and another fund that we have. And we simply have to do this. So I will vote for it begrudgingly.
Ben?
I concur. I think this is essentially a pre-planned inflation increase. We just, for some reason, haven't done it in several years, and I think we should address it going forward by matching the cost of service to, to the revenue requirements, which would lead to a smaller increase every year, which is customary, I think, for most businesses in America. I also would like to throw my support behind the desire to further evaluate the mandatory trash. I think, I think it needs a little bit of study, but I think the time may be here to, to be seriously considering that. I know that's not on the agenda tonight, and the process sounds a little murky, but I think that it's something that we should look at, at some point, and hopefully we can talk about that again soon. Thanks.
Thank you, Ben. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like, sign. And the motion does pass on a five-to-one vote with Counselor Cal Tabiano voting in opposition. I'm going to go ahead and reshuffle the agenda, because I do know there's some folks in the audience that would like to speak to Item 7D, so we're going to go ahead and do so. So I'll call ordinance Number 25-5, an ordinance amending zoning regulations Title 11, Section 3, Special Provisions, Chapter 38, airports, heliports, and helipads of the Whitefish City Code, and this will be on a first reading. Dave?
Good evening. So recently, City Council directed staff to expedite a zoning text amendment regarding the ambiguities in the code with regard to airports and heliports and their standards. Back in January, the Community Development Board, acting as the Board of Adjustment, overturned a zoning administrative decision with regard to setbacks in relation to proposed accessory building at the airport. That caused a little consternation in how we interpret the code. With that new interpretation, we've caused some issues with how we might interpret that in the future. So based on that, staff brought back a proposed zoning text amendment wherein we clarify several things, and we modified the code to be more consistent with the FAA standards with regard to setbacks off of the runways as well as accessory buildings. So the summary of what we are proposing to change are, we're clarifying in the chapter title, the development standards apply to landing strips. In the WA zoning district, which is our only zoning district that talks about airports, allows them as a conditional use in the WA zone, it lists that use specifically as airports and landing strips, including heliports and helipads. So we're just adding that word "landing strip" into the title. And then we're adding reference to airfields in there, because there is, we have heard that, you know, our airport in Whitefish is technically an airfield, not an airport. Some people may argue that. It is listed as an airport in certain things, but based on the type of activities that occur there and the lack of any amenities for passengers and things like that, and the fact that, you know, it only has really a windsock at that airport for pilots, it really is an airfield, and it's, you know, made of turf, not paved, et cetera. So we're just adding that word in there for clarity. We clarify that aircraft safety setbacks apply to landing strips and helipads and accessory buildings, not the entirety of an airport. With that Board of Adjustment decision, or the Community Development Board, it would require a 300-foot setback from the airport, which is pretty impossible, since the airport borders adjacent properties. There's no way for the airport to physically be 300-foot setback from an adjacent property. However, the intent of that, when it was originally done in 2014, was that it be a setback off of runways. And so we actually are clarifying that and basing it on FAA standards, where the runway safety setback would be 125 feet from the center line of the runway. And then we established an accessory building setback of 150 feet from the center line of the runway, which exceeds FAA standards. We also add a note that building codes may require fire suppression systems. And then we maintain the helipad and heliport setback of 300 feet. FAA standard is 280 feet for that, so it exceeds that. And then we also added some additional language. We removed the termination standards, where heliports and helipads, under the previous city council that adopted that standard in 2014, they added something that, you know, after a certain amount of time, if a helipad wasn't used, that it would terminate, whereas other conditional use permits go with the property in perpetuity. I'm assuming you guys read my staff report. It is page 145 of the packet. I'm not going to go into all the detail in there of the background on the airport, type of airport, just to touch on a couple things. I mean, it is a private, or is a public turf airstrip. It's only really useful for prop planes using a visual approach. And then minimum width for that is 250 feet under FAA standards. If it was to be expanded to any other type of airport, it would need at least 500 feet. And that airfield itself, the whole entirety of the airport is only 300 feet wide for most of its length. And a big, major portion of that is in the Flathead County. It is a legal use. Under our zoning code, airports are allowed in the WA zone under conditional use, and it's grandfathered in under the county SAG-FI, which the rest of the airport is, is also a legal use. So these amendments basically clarify some of those issues and make the setback requirements more consistent with FAA standards. And the heliport stuff, again, we're not really changing. So we did make a recommendation for approval of this. We received 30 or 40 public comments, the majority of which supported the amendments. There were a few that had some concerns about them. This did go to the Community Development Board on April 17. We had nine people speak, some of them in favor of the amendment, some of them opposed. After a public hearing, the Community Development Board recommended six-to-one to approve the proposed amendments. They did make one minor modification, remove the word "private" under Sections B and C, which staff was in support of with respect to property line setbacks. So we do, did attach the ordinance, and staff does recommend approval. Be glad to try to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Thank you, Dave. We'll start with Rebecca.
Yeah, Dave, has there ever been a survey out there?
A survey?
Yeah, to actually look at where Yeah, to actually look at where things are, if it's 150 feet, 125 feet, 300 feet, like, do we, has anybody actually surveyed it to see what the distances actually are?
I mean, oh, we've measured it off through the GIS and what the dimensions of the property are. You know, as far as the runway, the runway is not centered on that. It is about 300 feet wide, the length of it. I forget the total length of it versus the width, but it, you know, it's got plenty of area that they've set aside for, you know, safety zones in order to land my plane properly without any obstructions.
Okay. And then the second thing is, so helicopters can lay, land and take off there, even though there's a 300-foot standard?
Well, you know, there's no designated helipad at that airport. There's nothing paved. There's no specific site for that. I mean, over, you know, the 60-year existence of that airport, I mean, helicopters have landed there. It's, you know, it's one of those things, we don't really regulate that, whether they can or cannot land there.
But according to this, they're not supposed to land there?
Well, no, if there was, if they were going to develop a helipad, which would be a paved surface that's specific to helicopters, then that, yeah, wouldn't, I don't think that site would be appropriate for that.
But right now, they are doing that, because whenever I'm out at the dog park, I see helicopters landing, taking off, landing, taking off, landing, taking off. And so who, who oversees that, then, if it's not the city, then, even though we have the standard in our ordinance?
I mean, that would either be the state who owns the airport or the FAA.
So us putting this in our ordinance isn't enforcement in any way?
Well, that won't affect the existing airport. Anytime, you know, that thing's been in existence, again, for, at that location for 60 years. You know, any standards that we add, you know, if someone, if they're going to make some amendments in the future to that airport, then that visa would apply, but it wouldn't affect the existing airport or its uses.
I, I guess I'll speak to this when there's a motion about my concerns. Okay.
Steve, and then Giuseppe?
Dave, I mean, technically, we're not talking about an airport at, out there by the dog park. It's not technically an airport.
Yeah, I mean, it's classified, I guess, as an airfield. I mean, Giuseppe could probably answer that better, being a pilot, but it doesn't have the things that a typical airport has, and so it is called an airport under, you know, the state designates it as one, even though it's just a turf airstrip, honestly.
Right, and that's what I kind of want to get, I want to make sure that the way we reference this makes sense versus, based on what's on the ground out there. And it starts with the title, 113-38. Should we add the word airfield in there, airfield?
You know, I mean, I don't think we necessarily have to add it in there. I added it into the text of it, just so it's clear that, you know, it applies to that, and no one can say that doesn't apply to that. But, you know, I mean, if you look under the, you know, where the map that the state has of where there's airports, I mean, it's listed as an airport. I mean, that's a general term. I mean, you can kind of go through it, but typically, it doesn't have the amenities that an airport would have.
All right. I don't want to split hairs. I just want to make sure that we're clear that.
That's why I added that word airfield into the text of it. I didn't think it needed to be in the title.
Okay, thank you.
Giuseppe?
Dave, have we done any verification with all the Code of Federal Regulation 14 FAA sections regarding safe airspace? And have we verified that the verbiage, as it is written, would satisfy all those requirements?
Yeah, I believe so. I mean, I, you know, we definitely looked at all the FAA regulations with regard to airports and made sure that what we have in here is consistent with that and.
And have we interacted with the Montana State Aeronautics Division to make sure we communicated and we were fulfilling all their wishes and rules about this?
Yeah, we had a, had a conference call with a lady from the airport, or, you know, the state, and I can't remember her name, that she's the one that's in charge of all the state airports, and sent her the draft or the language, and she was fine with, you know, how we listed it. You know, they did ask us, you know, some questions about whether or not they could apply to the city to deannex that small portion of the airport that's not in city limits or that is in city limits, just to make it all under one jurisdiction, because they, you know, obviously feel pulled around, because part, most of the airport's in the county, there's a little part of it that's in the city, and that might be forthcoming. I don't know what they're going to do with regard to that, but.
Ben?
Dave, could you recap why a landing strip is 125 feet and a helipad is 300?
I mean, that's basically the, you know, the helicopter can drop down, you know, as you know, straight down and basically land, so it doesn't have as big of a safety zone, although they do have, when they take off, they need to, you know, gain a little height as they go. You know, that's basically the difference. But the 300 feet is mostly because of noise and dust from helicopters. I mean, I think that's the, the main reason of that distance, just because they create more of a havoc when they're coming in.
If somebody had a property here in town with an extra 125-foot strip on it, and they wanted to start flying airplanes in, given these reduced setbacks, can they do that, or what would be the process for them to do?
They would have to apply for a conditional use permit for a private airport, and they'd have to meet these standards in order to do it. I mean, I'm not, I think it's possible, there might be some properties around there, but I do think that there's, you know, certain considerations with regard to airports with, you know, as far as obstructions, mountains, things like that. I mean, it has to be a pretty flat area with, you know, an easy approach without a lot of obstacles. And it'd most likely be outside of city limits if that was the case.
Sure, thank you.
Additional questions? Not seeing any. We did advertise for a public hearing on what will be ordinance 25-5. Any public testimony this evening? Aaron?
Good evening. My name is Aaron Almy, 453 Armory Road in Whitefish, and I'm in support of the zoning text amendment.
Thanks, Aaron. Who's next?
Kitty Banner Seaman, 1716 West Lake Shore Drive, and I am for the amendment as well of the Whitefish airstrip.
Thank you. Who's next?
I'm Robert Seaman, and I'm very supportive of this airport. I think it's a crucial piece of history for this, for this town. So, anyway.
Thanks, Robert. Additional public testimony this evening?
Hi, I'm Kate McMahon. I live at 151 Wedgewood Lane in Whitefish, directly across from Armory Park and near where the airport is proposed to be developed. I just want to clarify that we are fine with the airport, the way it exists. We understand the heritage and appreciate that. It's something that, I think, contributes greatly to the community, so we, we're all in agreement on that. My concern is that the amendment does address and clarify the setback issues and is based on FAA standards, and we appreciate the work that staff went through to research that and work with MDT. However, the amendment only addresses safety issues regarding the runway and does not consider the off-site impacts related to safety and land use compatibility. Such issues include fire risk, glare, light, noise, infrastructure, environmental concerns, conflicts between different airport user groups, like Rebecca was mentioning, the helicopters, experimental aircraft. Hasn't been explored. Flight operations over a popular park are also concerns. A master plan would address, for the airport, would address these off-site impacts and document current and proposed future uses, would have provisions to maintain community character, protect emergency use at the airport, and link future improvements to public benefits. Such a plan would be useful for the city council in evaluating future conditional use permits. As noted at the Community Development Board meeting, it's unlikely that the owner of the Whitefish Airport, MDT, will undertake the planning process because of the cost of doing so. But it was suggested that the growth policy update provides an opportunity to address concerns regarding future airport development. This alternative full-blown master plan, I think, should be pursued and incorporated into the growth policy. In addition to the information that was provided at the Community Development Board about the heritage and the history, I think that's very important to include in the growth policy right now. Growth policy barely even mentions the airport, so I think really expanding that there and addressing some of these concerns would be, I would urge you, counsel, to undertake that. Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Cory?
As always, thank you for your service, especially on a beautiful spring evening. I'll be as punctual as possible. I do have a, a quick letter that was drafted by the local aviators.
Just name and address, please, Cory.
Cory Seaman, 461 Armory Road.
Thank you.
I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak today. I address you as a longtime resident of the Whitefish, of Whitefish, and enthusiastic pilot of over 15 years with experience. Additionally, a proud volunteer of Angel Flight as well as the Young Eagles Program. Whitefish has a proud heritage rooted in logging, railroading, and backcountry aviation. Aviation has always been a part of our landscape and our identity. In 1934, the city of Whitefish secured funding through the Works Progress Administration to fulfill a vision that began five years earlier, when local resident led by DP Deaton purchased 104 acres to build a golf course. What emerged was more than a golf course. It became a dual-purpose facility, served as a landing strip as well. The clubhouse built of local lodge pulpines was even referred to as an administrative building with a nine-hole airport. The first recorded aircraft landed August 3, 1939. Aircraft continued using the golf course into the early 40s, even during tournaments. As golf gained popularity, flying gradually ceded to the fairways, but the course remained designated as an emergency airfield through the 50s and 60s. October 1963, the current Whitefish airstrip, known as Whitefish Airport Identifier 58 Sierra, was established. It allowed the golf course to focus fully on recreation while aviation retained its place in the community. Since then, the turf airstrip has quietly served small aircraft and remains a legal, means a legal and under, legal use under both Whitefish WA zoning and Flathead County SAG 5 zoning. The Whitefish airstrip is state-owned, is a state-owned public facility that is not included in the national plan of integrated airport systems. The airport's sole interest, intent, is for small aircraft operating under visual flight rules, having no instrumented approach, no lights, no services. The airstrip, the Whitefish grass strip, has never been intended for commercial operations and nor will it ever be, and it also complies with all FAA design standards for this class of runway. Unfortunately, due to ambiguous zoning language adopted in 2014, the Whitefish airstrip was recently rendered non-conforming based on an interpretation to impose a 300-foot setback from all adjacent property lines, not just from runways. As you've heard from staff, the setback was intended for helicopter landing, landing zones and safety buffers, but mistakenly applied to the entirety of the airfield. The proposed zoning amendment today corrects this misapplication and relines city policy with FAA standards. Specifically, 125-foot setback from runway center line to adjacent property and 150-foot setback to accessory structures. These revisions are thoughtful, measured, and grounded in real-world aviation safety practices. This modest airfield is also part of the legacy of one of Whitefish's most beloved citizens, Dr. Hugh Rogers, born April 1, 1959. He was a compassionate veterinarian, a tireless advocate for animal welfare, and a skilled pilot. He moved to the Flathead in 1997, purchasing Alpine Animal Hospital, known ad, and is known for his willingness to provide care at all hours, often free. Dr. Rogers also served others through aviation, flying at M4 Mall through Angel Flight missions to help patients obtain crucial medical care. On his 50th birthday, April 1, 2009, Dr. Rogers lost his life in a tragic plane crash over Hungry Horse Reservoir. In tribute to his legacy, the community came together to create the huge Rogers Wag Park, a six-acre dog park adjacent to the airfield that opened in 2011. It stands as a living memorial for Hugh's love for both animals and aviation. The proximity of the Wag Park and the airstrip is no coincidence. It reflects the unique way this community honors its history and its people. These landmarks, simple and unassuming, represent local spirit and resilience. Now, I want to briefly address a concern raised by some opponents regarding the absence of a master airport layout plan in the growth policy. This airfield is not a commercial nor federally funded airport, and FAA 150-5190-4B does not require an airport layout plan for small public turf strips such as the Whitefish airstrip. Whitefish airport, airport layout plans are tools designed for larger, high-traffic airports, planning future expansion, or applying for federal funds, not modest legacy strips that have quietly coexisted with their neighbors for decades. Moreover, the zoning amendment before you today does not expand operations nor change use. It simply restores legal clarity to ensure consistency with FAA standards for this class of airstrip. Requiring an airs, requiring an airport layout plan in this context would not only be a massive Whitefish City administrative burden, it would also impose the unnecessary financial cost on the city and its taxpayers, with no added safety benefit. And most importantly, the Whitefish City, the Whitefish, the city of Whitefish is not the airport sponsor of the strip. That role lies within the state of Montana, which owns and manages the facility through Montana Department of Transportation. Whitefish airstrip is not funded from your common, Whitefish resident taxpayer, but funded through aviation fuel tax credits along with Montana pilot registration fees. Since the city of Whitefish does not sponsor, fund, nor oversee the airstrip or its operations, it is procedurally inappropriate or unjust, or just jurisdictionally inappropriate, incorrect to demand that the city develop an airport layout plan. The zoning amendment before you today does not, is not about expanding the airport operations. They are about maintaining a longstanding legal use in a way that is safe, consistent with federal guidelines, and respectful to the community. I support the amendment, and that's a brief synopsis. Sorry to go down the rabbit hole. Appreciate your support, and have a great night.
Thanks, Cory. Further public testimony? I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council. Giuseppe?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve ordinance number 25-5, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Whitefish, Montana, amending zoning regulations title 11, section 3, special provisions, chapter 38, airports, heliports, and helipads of the Whitefish City Code.
Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Counselor Cornell. Would you like to speak to your motion, Giuseppe?
Yes, I have something that I studied a lot on this one, but Cory expressed it better than I could myself. So I would only reiterate that this zoning update is thoughtful, limited in scope, and rooted in facts and non-speculations, and the city is not the airport sponsor. So the city has no jurisdiction, and it would be improper and unnecessary to require an airport layout plan, like Cory well phrased, for a facility owned and managed by the state of Montana. And to pacify many concerns, this is a clarification, it's not an expansion. Nobody through this verbiage is going to find loopholes to expand the airport. It corrects a misapplied setback standard and brings us into alignment with FAA guidance for small turf airstrips. Furthermore, the staff has interacted, from what I hear, with the state of Montana Aeronautics Division and confirmed verbiage with the FAA. So I couldn't be more satisfied to make this motion and support it.
Thank you, Giuseppe. Further comments from the council? Rebecca?
I'm, I'm not, I know this will pass tonight, but I'm not going to vote in favor of it, because I do think there are significant safety concerns out there with the train right next to it carrying highly volatile fluids and the potential of liquid nitrogen gas being transported as well. And the city council is responsible for the safety of the whole town. So I would be very much in favor of having a growth policy section and an airport layout plan at some point, because I, I think it's all grown up organically with support from our planning department. But I do think there's a lot of conflicting uses out there. It is used commercially, because people are already using it to practice helicopter landing and takeoff, and they're also doing those little motorized hang glider things out there, too. And we've had a proposal for commercial use out there with electric bikes, and so at some point, it will be potentially brought up again. So I would really like our staff to consider looking at a deeper dive rather than putting a Band-Aid on this, but thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, Rebecca. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign. And the motion does carry unafforded two vote with Counselor Davis and Counselor Norton voting in opposition. We will circle back to Resolution 25-9, adopting the City of Whitefish Ethics Policy, which is on page 95 of the packet. Thanks, everyone, for coming this evening.
Good evening, mayor and council. So hopefully this will be the least contentious thing on your agenda this evening. As you are all aware, back in 1997, the City Council adopted an ethics and conflict interest policy, and then in 1998, you amended it again. It has been on council goals, I think, since last year. We had two work sessions on this issue. Staff drafted the proposed ethics policy to mirror the code of ethics for public officers and employees. That is set forth in Montana law. There's, since, this was, since your ethics policy was amended in 1998, there's been some pretty significant changes in Montana law. So we tried to track Montana law. You gave us really good direction, I think. There are two work sessions. One change that I did make, and you have in your packet my red lines from what was changed and what wasn't. One change that I did make after our last work session is to exempt committee members from the rules regarding quasi-judicial matters. As you all know, quasi-judicial matters are matters where you sit as a judge. And we don't like you guys talking to each other. We don't like you talking to the public on that, just because you should come into the hearing, basically the public hearing, with, you know, just the information that's before you and public comment. Committees, I think, are a little bit different. They're not making, they're not making decisions. Committees are providing you guys's recommendation. There is a couple of exceptions, of course. Park Board does make some decisions that are binding, as does the Police Commission, although we don't see them very often. So those are kind of exempted from that. So I really kind of felt strongly, putting committees under the aspects of quasi-judicial didn't make a whole lot of sense. Not like I want people to be petitioning our committee members to make a decision one way or another, but I think requiring them as an ethical matter is a different matter. So what you have in front of me, in front of you and me, is, I guess, what we talked about maybe two months ago. Happy to answer any questions. Happy to make any adjustments that you folks feel necessary.
Thanks, Angie. Who would like to start? I saw Frank's hand first, then Steve.
Angie, when you say there's nobody else making quasi-judicial decisions, that's not true with Planning Board. They are.
They're included in, yeah, they're included. Absolutely.
So they're still included. I thought you were excluding all boards.
We're including boards that are making quasi-judicial decisions, just not committees that are recommending to council.
Perfect. Steve. Ben?
I just want to first say, great job editing this document. I think you captured all of a whole lot of feedback, and I just wanted to, thanks for doing a good job there. I only have one question left, and I think we talked about it before, but I can't remember the answer. If a city council member, future city council member, were to violate this policy, the options include a written request by the council that the individual resign. And as we've seen in politics today, sometimes people simply don't resign when they should. Is that intentional? Why can't it, why can we not remove somebody who violates the ethical policy if they're unwilling to leave?
That's a very good question. I think per charter, you guys could remove a council member that violates the ethics policy.
Because the option three is referral to the Flathead County Attorney, but they wouldn't...
That's state law, too. Yeah, no, they probably wouldn't do anything.
I mean, they can't prosecute under ethics policy, right?
Mm-hmm.
They can?
No, they can under state law, yeah.
They can prosecute under the ethics policy?
Under state law, they can, yes.
Under state?
But if you guys wanted to add that they are removed, but it would have to be, I imagine, by a majority-voted council? Yeah, supermajority? I mean, if you guys wanted to go there, happy to put that in there.
Arguments against it?
I mean, these are elected officials. I think that, you know, there's levels of violating the ethics policy. You know, some things should be a slap on the wrist, some things should be removal. And I think we would want to make sure that we have some kind of bigger majority than just a possible three-to-two vote.
From my perspective, I think that the council, if a member refused to and the council wanted to move to remove them by supermajority of remaining council members, that would seem to be appropriate, balanced, and the idea that the county attorney would take this on under any circumstances is laughable, I have to say. And so I think that, you know, if we are serious about this, and it's important, I think we ought to have an option to do that.
Rebecca?
I did research this years ago, and the county attorney does take all ethics violations in the county, and then it goes up to the Attorney General after that. But the county attorney called me back about it and said, no ethics violations have ever been filed, and nothing would be done, ever. So I don't think it, I don't think it's really a reasonable venue for dealing with ethics issues, but legally, it is there in our state statute, that that is the mechanism for doing that. And then the only other question I had, didn't we just, like, eliminate supermajority decision-making a little while ago?
We did with respect to ordinances.
Okay.
I think you could build it into this policy, that a council member could be removed by supermajority. Yeah, we did remove it for ordinances because it was a really old code, and sometimes we only have, like, you know, a few people here, and so it was kind of, yeah, it was hard to pass ordinances.
But not for all decisions, then?
No, no.
Just for ordinances?
Steve?
Just for the purposes of adding this to the ethics, to our ethics code tonight, would it be four out of six with the mayor voting, or four out of five without the mayor voting, in terms of a supermajority? Two-thirds would be a supermajority, which would be four out of six with the mayor voting. Would we want to require the mayor to vote on that?
I think if you're removing someone from office, most likely.
The mayor probably should. So it'd take four out of six votes?
Not that I would ever want to be put in that position, but I think probably...
I think it would be appropriate.
Appropriate, yeah.
Okay. So is that, is that the direction you would be interested? We would be interested in going...
I would personally.
Four out of six?
Is the council okay with that?
Yeah, I would, motion is needed, I move to amend the ethics policy to include that provision at four out of six with the mayor voting.
We can see that at the second reading, Angie?
What's that?
We can see that at the second reading?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, let's hold the public hearing, though.
Yeah, would you like to hold the public hearing first, and then at the end, make that motion?
Good point.
Okay.
Keep that thought, Frank.
Or not.
With that said, we did advertise for a public hearing for Item 7B of our agenda, which will be Resolution 25-9. Any public comment this evening? Not seeing any? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back for a motion and an amendment, which can be part and parcel of your motion, please.
My motion is to approve the Ethics Committee Ethics Code with an amendment that would require that, or allow for, the council to remove a member that did not resign for ethics reasons by a supermajority that would include the mayor as a voting member of that supermajority.
And that motion has been seconded by Counselor Cornell. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Let me, can I clarify something? I think it's a supermajority. The mayor's vote, needs to vote. He doesn't have to vote for it. He just needs to be included in the votes. So the mayor could choose not to, but the other four could. And so I just want to make sure that it's, you know, not required that you support it.
With that said, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously, which brings us to Item 7C of the agenda, a request from Casey Momquist for a CUP for a bar lounge located at 16 Baker Avenue, and the property is zoned WB3. Wendy, thanks for hanging around.
Yeah, and our applicant, he left. So the request before you is for a CUP to utilize a full liquor license at 16 Baker Avenue. Conditional use permits is, are required in the WB3, which is listed as a bar lounge. This is the Clydesdale Creamery Building over across the street from Marcus. So 16 Avenue, 16 Baker Avenue, is a mixed-use condominium building with commercial on the ground floor. It's surrounded by commercial uses on WB3. It has a commercial core designation. It's served by all public services and facilities. We did notice the neighbors. We did get one public comment in support. We reviewed it according to the conditional use permit criteria, which are mostly for development. The building's already there, so most of them were addressed at the time of building permit. But it does comply with the growth policy, the zoning regulations, the site is suitable. Parking was required at the time of development just for those upper ground floor, above-ground-floor residential uses. There's no commercial, or parking required for commercial uses in the WB3. Public facilities and services were reviewed at the time of building permit. It shouldn't have any neighborhood impact, and it is compatible with the neighborhood. So the Community Development Board held a public hearing on April 17th. We had two folks from the public, from the neighboring business, the BFW, they had concerns about, just sort of generally about non-business customers using their parking lot, which I think is just an issue in the downtown, not necessarily particular to the addition of the beer/wine license here. So the board did unanimously recommend approval, subject to three conditional use permits, which, because it's an existing building, there are just kind of not much. Any questions?
Thanks, Wendy. Any questions for Wendy? Not seeing any. We did advertise for a public hearing on Item 7C of our agenda. Any public comment this evening? Not seeing any? I'll go ahead and close the public comment period and turn it back to the council for a motion. Giuseppe?
Yes, I just scrolled the wording, but I move to approve the CUP as requested.
Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Counselor Fury. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously. Michelle? Thank you, Wendy. We'll move on to Item 8, consideration to authorize staff to proceed with final design and bidding of Armory Park Master Plan Phase 4. Maria?
Good evening. At least someone has stuck around for my staff report. This evening, I'm seeking your authorization to initiate the sealed bid process for the portion of Phase 4 of the Armory Park Master Plan, and my staff report and supplemental documents are in your packet. Since the completion of Phase 3 of the Armory Park Master Plan, the Parks and Recreation Department has been working with RPA and the Park Board to identify the prioritization of Phase 4 projects throughout, through community-wide surveys, collaboration with the WAG Board, and regular public meetings. The Park Board finalized a five-year prioritization of Armory Park improvements in October of last year. In FY '25, the Parks and Recreation Department will complete the installation of a small child playground and several park amenities, such as picnic tables, garbage cans, and mallet containers. We've also completed engineering on drainage improvements around the Armory Building, a new wag well, and storage garage foundation. RPA will continue to engineer the reconstruction of one softball field, the removal and associated drainage improvements of the second existing softball field, restrooms, playground paths and benches, and an additional south parking lot. At this time, we are prepared to publicly bill, to publicly bid construction of the storage garage foundation, drainage improvements, and the wag well development project. I have updated the project schedule that's in your packet to the following dates, this evening, approval to bid the project, and then publicly advertise May 11th and 18th, do a bid opening on May 27th for a bid award at our June 2nd meeting, and then begin construction July 14th, which is still the date that we had anticipated. Our goal is to reach substantial completion by September 12th. The current preliminary construction cost estimate is $208,205, and the FY '25 CIP has identified $450,000 of resort tax dollars for the Armory Park Phase 4. So we have adequate funding. We've completed review of the final designs for this project, and those are in your packet. It's also important to note that this is one of the council goals for FY '25, and a necessary step in completing the Armory Park Master Plan as approved by the Park Board. Staff respectfully request authorization to proceed with the bidding of Armory Park Master Plan as presented in this report and as approved by the Board of Park Commissioners.
Thank you, Maria. Any questions for Maria on her staff report or the plans? Not seeing any? I would entertain a motion. I have one, one, I've... No, this is not a public hearing. I have one question, Maria. The wag park well development, is that for municipal water, drinking water only, or will that be supplemental to feed the pond?
It's a good question. So it will not be supplemental to feed the pond. The existing well that feeds the pond will remain in place, and the new well will be drilled to hook up to the irrigation system. And so we are currently irrigating with treated water. The wag park is the second highest user of irrigated irrigation services in the city, second only to Highway 93 South.
Wow, okay. Great. Good to see that improvement coming forward. Now, Giuseppe, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the project for Armory Road.
Is there a second to the motion?
Yeah, sure. Second. Nobody else is...
Seconded enthusiastically by Counselor Cornell. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion's carries unanimously. Michelle? Thanks very much, Maria.
Thank you.
You have Dana's report enclosed with the packet. Any questions for Dana? Dana, anything additional to report on through May 5th?
Yeah, well, yay, no more legislature. We're done. We're just waiting on the governor to go through the bills that he has remaining, quite a few to look at, to determine if he's going to sign them. In fact, the list that you have in your packet is already so outdated. Many of those are going to be enrolled, and we'll go to the governor, and then there's quite a few of them that are also dead. Really, the ones that I'm watching are House Bill 231 and Senate Bill 542. They're both property tax changes. Both of them changed tax rates, and both eventually addressed the second homeowner tax rates. They're just designed a little bit different. One is more of a graduated scale, and one's kind of a set number, and then you get, like, half the rate if you're a long-time resident. There's a lot of, a little more work to it. You have to apply for it. It will not affect, from what I can tell, at least one of them will not affect our fiscal year '26 budget. One may. The only thing it could affect is our voted levy for fire, but they've put in these clauses in here that we can go against what the voters said and make it a dollar amount, or the state will reimburse us for the lost money. So it does give us some time to address, so if a court decides that we can't change our voted levies, the state will fund us that difference, which is important because we have a 24-mil voted levy for the fire department. This essentially would reduce the values in Whitefish because it reduces your residential taxable value. If we're stuck at 24 mils, we're going to collect, you know, probably not half because we have quite a few second homeowners, but we will see a drop in our taxable value. So that's the only concern on those, but it sounds like they're trying to make us whole regardless, and then if not, we have to go to voters, basically, within four years before their funding runs out to help us be whole, to change that to a voted-dollar levy because you can no longer have a mil levy. You have to have a dollar voted levy, which isn't great because you don't, it doesn't grow with growth, but at least we still have the funding. grow with growth, but at least we still have the funding abilities. So, a lot of changes, a lot of bills out there that have been passed and signed. We're going through them, checking with Angie on some, like, does that apply to us? Does that not? So, we're working through those, working on the budget. In the packet, you'll see like your future work session topics. We're booked all the way up to July twenty-first. July twenty-first is the earliest I can get the city goal-setting session on there. If you guys would like to hold a special session before then, we could do that for goals. Just let me know. I know it's bad timing, it's summer, it's like people are ready to be outside and not spend another day in the office, but if you'd like to do them before then, let me know, and we could probably work something out. We do have our budget work sessions coming up, so remember, May twenty-eighth, five-thirty, and then June ninth. And then lastly, I just want to congratulate Michelle. This, I think, Thursday, May eighth, is her twenty-five years with the city of Whitefish. So, yeah, yeah, yes. Pretty amazing, so that's all.
Five years left.
She sold me. Yeah.
Thank you very much, Dana. We will move on to item ten A. I'll just briefly review our appointments, for those listening, which no one is, to the park board. Terry Dunn, Jimmy D. Herrera, we still have one vacancy on the park board. The Architectural Review Committee, Ryan Kiefer, as well as Mark Lounkar, AKA Lucky. We still have one vacancy, but I believe Michelle's going to reach out to Hillary Vrana to see when she can get in for an interview with the council, which will likely be in late July, given our schedule. And then, in terms of the CVB, our three incumbents were reappointed, Edna White, Matt Gabeau, and Jesse Farnes. With that said, we did receive three letters from citizens concerned with the Whitefish PD, participation with the Border Patrol. Any comments on that? I know Dana did distribute some of the adopted Police Department immigration violation policy, as well as bias-based policing policies this evening for your review. I would open it up for discussion, if any. Ben?
I would appreciate, I think, and maybe the public would as well, if there could be just a little bit of a summary of what our touchpoints are with immigration authorities, and when, when they might be brought in to assist.
To read, to just bring attention to a couple of the concerns that came up, the Whitefish Police Department's policy for, I think, the main topic I got from the name concern of the public comment, some of these letters, is that we use them for interpretation purposes. And that is not correct, and Border Patrol does not train that either. We did do training with Border Patrol, because there's been a lot of changes with immigration here recently. I don't know exactly what date it was, but within the last month, we did training with both sides of our shift concerning Border Patrol and our involvement, and their direction was not to contact them for interpretation-only services. They do not want to be called for that. That's not what they're there for. We do have, we do have a policy for immigration services, or, excuse me, interpretation services. However, we do have Language Link, which is the online phone interpretation services that law enforcement has provided. We have, we can call, we have an account with them, they provide those services, they actually will transcribe those for us and provide them. It's a little difficult, it's not the most user-friendly thing, from what I've heard the officers speak to in the court. Court also uses it. And we also do not limit our officers from utilizing Google Translate or any other AI. If they have the ability to do that, that's great. This situation, there was not a, there is a language barrier identified, however, it wasn't the reason for the immigration referral. We worked with Border Patrol for my entire twenty-five-year career here. We have a Border Patrol office within the city. There's quite a few agents in the area. We get a lot of visitors from out of the area, both north and south and crossed the pond. Majority of our interactions with removals, those type of things, is north, the northern border, visitors from Canada coming down, especially back in the early days of policing. For me, Whitefish was a pretty rowdy place, and so there was removals for those purposes. However, there's been uptick in immigration issues within the Flathead County, which I think is, everybody's aware of, and there's been a lot of media on that and a lot of issues going on. The understanding of immigration is difficult, especially today, and there's a lot of court proceedings and rules that have gone out. It's impossible to keep up with on a, on a daily basis. And Whitefish Police Department does not enforce immigration law. That is, the United States federal government does that. We are required to gain for criminal immigration issues, if there is a criminal detainer or criminal warrant, and our policy speaks directly to that, as the difference between civil and criminal. In this situation, there was a question about immigration status due to a number of factors under reasonable suspicion that the officer had. The officer contacted Spokane Sector Dispatch and had them do a query into the individual's immigration status. I do not know what the result of that was. We did not look at it, we did not receive it, but Dispatch dispatched agents to his location. The officer completed his traffic stop, issued a written warning for the violation that was occurred, for the reason for the stop, and left. Border Patrol conducted the immigration investigation and made their determination from there. We had no part in that. We did not observe the arrest, take part in the rest, or facilitate the rest. Did I clarify?
Yeah, can I just make an observation? That sounds like a bit different than how this was reported.
Facebook was not accurate.
And I guess when I just cut Bridger off there, there is a line that we can't cross in divulging confidential criminal justice information, which reasons for arrest and such, it's in, I really appreciate Bridger's delicacy in that, is there's this, you know, why he was, why he was pulled over? Yes, it was a broken taillight. Anything further than that is probably stuff that is, falls under a statutory duty that we can't breach. Let me put it that way.
I'm going to add just one thing, because it was brought up by some members of the public. There are agencies in Montana, local government agencies, that do have, they're called a two-eight-seven-G part, like, program, that local law enforcement can actually have with the federal government to help with immigration and enforcement of violations. And there's three different kind of areas. There's the jail enforcement model, the task force model, and warrant service, service officers. And currently, in the state of Montana, Flathead County is one of them, and Gallatin County. And you'll see in other states, because they post the names of all of them, who, and the state of Montana, I should say, the state of Montana, Highway Patrol is under the task force model, so while they're out doing their patrols, they can do some type of immigration work. Flathead County is related to their jail, and being able to process those issues there. The city of Whitefish and, or staff and Whitefish Police Department, we have no interest in, you know, participating in those agreements, but you are seeing small communities, cities, and towns across the United States that are starting to participate in those type of agreements. But unless the council would, which I assume is not interested, but we're not interested in doing the work of ICE, that is their job, they're funded that way. We don't want any part of that. We don't have the funding or capacity.
I, just, just so we can be as transparent as possible, I just, the thing I'm just wondering is how we get from a traffic stop to the Border Patrol being there, whether we're there anymore or not. I just, I don't quite understand that process, because I don't, I mean, I've been pulled over before, and nobody asks me my immigration status. And I, I just, you know, this idea of probable cause or reasonable suspicion has always been murky, and it always, you know, it's something that lawyers make a lot of money off of. And I just, I want to be transparent for our community members, so that they know what, how we go from a, you know, a busted taillight to detention in Tacoma. Like, what is, what triggers, and I get it, that we don't enforce immigration law, and we don't want any part of that, I would assume. But how does, how does Border Patrol end up showing up in that case? That's the part that I don't, I don't quite get, and I, and I think we need to be clear and transparent with our community about how, why, and when it gets triggered to Border Patrol coming in and investigating an immigration violation.
So, I would say it's, and again, it's very, it's very hard to sit here and not be completely transparent, but we do have laws that prevent us from, you know, Bridger had a con, you know, a conversation with the Flathead County Attorney today, basically, and said, if it's confidential criminal justice information, you guys could be subject to a misdemeanor, so I don't really want to correct myself here. I would say that the officer evaluated the totality of the circumstances and called Dispatch, as far as I know, out of Spokane, and they sent, they, we didn't actually call Border Patrol. We called Dispatch, and they sent an officer over. So, I think it's really unfortunate. I think our police force does an amazing job at what they do. I think that we, going forward in the future, will be very, very careful of when we call Border Patrol. Fair?
Yeah, and just to clarify, I mean, the officer contacted Border Patrol Dispatch out of Spokane Sector, so it was not our local dispatch. We also can run an immigration query locally, however it goes, to probably the Spokane Sector, I imagine, here, and they review it and bring it here. We have a timeframe where we have to make a decision on what we can do, and that timeframe is the duration of that traffic stop, and that's the duration, period. This traffic stop was fourteen minutes, well within reasonable for a traffic stop to issue a warning citation for a non-English-speaking person, which just those barriers in itself would extend a traffic stop in normal, normal cases. The officer was able to provide the, get, obtain the information needed for that traffic stop, and, and go through their checks of that. Just because you have a driver's license does not mean you're legally in the United States of America. Some driver's license, which one of them I reviewed today, actually said, is not a U.S. citizen on it. Now, that's not from the state of Montana. I wish they all had that clarification, when you're, when you're not, when you have a driver's license, you're not a citizen of the United States. But that information isn't provided. Every, all state, every state has a different driver's license return that the officers have to review and understand in those sense. But just because you have a driver's license in your possession doesn't mean you have a driver's license, doesn't mean your driver's license, your driving privileges haven't been revoked, doesn't mean you don't have a warrant, there's a lot of different things. So, just physically obtaining a driver's license does not mean in any way that you're legally here, legally can drive, or do those type of things. So, we run queries on those things to ensure that that's the case. The officer saw some things that raised his suspicion about it, and followed up with those. And whatever the information he provided to the Border Patrol Dispatch, they saw something they were concerned about and sent agents to his location, and they took it from there. This is, and this is not common. This is not something we do all the time. However, we do interact with Border Patrol. It's infrequent, but we do interact with Border Patrol on a number of different situations, not just immigration.
Sure, I totally understand that, and I hope you don't feel like I'm trying to point the finger, I'm just trying to get a better understanding from me and for our community members. And I think that, I think that most of us in this room feel that, you know, it's really unfortunate that we are put in this position in our town of eight thousand, nine thousand people, that all of a sudden, you know, these issues are cropping up, and it's not because of us, it's because of what's going on at the federal level. And, and personally, you know, the lack of due process at the federal level is something that really, really grinds on my nerves, as somebody who teaches civics to high school students, and, you know, due process, and is something that, you know, that's one of the things that this country really prides itself on, and it's just gone away, and it's sad that it's, you know, it's coming here, it's all the way out here in our little tiny town, and that just, it's difficult, you know, and I think the community is feeling that as well. And they're angry, and it's easy to point the finger. They, they want an enemy, they want somebody to be responsible for this, and we all know where the responsibility lies, and I, for one, certainly don't think that it lies with our police force, so I hope you, I hope you feel that from me personally.
Yeah, and, and we do, and the police department, we are also, need to be accountable, and we're accountable to one another, the officers, we preach that all the time. We've reviewed our, our policies, we've talked with Angela and Dana about our policies and some council members. You know, learning from this situation, I'm putting some things in place, making sure a supervisor is notified prior to contacting Border Patrol, is something that we put into place immediately, so we had a little bit more discretion, oversight into those referrals, and also understanding that the immigration right now in this country is a mess, and there's a lot of things working through that. When the stove's hot and it burned your hand, you reach back, you don't touch it again. So, you know, it's gonna, there's, some things need to happen to ensure us here in Whitefish Police Department, that the government has their ducks in a row, and they know what's going on with the individuals, and whether they can be here or not, as they've been granted whatever status it is, work visas, parole, citizenship, the whole nine yards. I mean, there's a lot of things that factor into this, and it's a lot of information for your patrol officer to understand and have down at that point. We rely on our, our specific agencies that cover that, that topic, to be the experts in that, and unfortunately, everybody makes mistakes, and it's, you got to limit those, for sure.
Yeah, full disclosure, I was involved in showing up and being, talking on a megaphone and all that, and another unfortunate event where I approached a policeman working and asked pointed questions, so, so I have learned a lot since then, and one of them is that we have, we have policies that Bridger was able to provide. One is bias-based policing, and the other one is immigration violations, which these are national, nationally-produced, right, Bridger? And I think they're going to be attached to our packet, so that the public can read them. So, I think when people read through them, you'll see that they're really well, well-intentioned for local police not to take over immigration services jobs, but to actually keep the peace locally. And I think we're all going to be learning as we go, because we've never seen some of the things that we're seeing right now, and so people are on edge, me in particular, lately. Sorry, everybody. But I think the other thing that, that I'd like to reiterate is, we're very fortunate to have good policing, people that really have committed their lives to keeping the peace. And, and on all levels, we have to remember that even if it's scary to see things, or maybe unjust, that we have to keep coming back to that as our standard of behavior, and we're going to keep coming back to that. And so, I just wanted to remind the public to educate yourselves, but also don't demonize the people that are actually heroes.
Thanks, Rebecca. Any further comments on this topic? Dana, anything further this evening from staff?
I just had one thing come across my emails. Tomorrow, there's going to be an open house for the US ninety-three West of Whitefish Project, so if you have questions, but that project is going to get ready to kick off, it's over west of town, mountainside, oh, I was going to say mountainside, I think that's right, yeah, mountainside drive, and that goes about three miles, but expect delays, but they have an open house, so if people have questions, we're excited to see that project start, keep moving.
And just as a reminder, our FY twenty-six budget meetings are May twenty-eighth and June nineteenth. And just as a reminder, our FY twenty-six budget meetings are May twenty-eighth and June ninth at five-thirty P.M.
Correct.
Okay, great. Anything further from council? We are adjourned. Thanks everyone.